As the dates say, no bad weather, just good clothing.
Good morning. This time, we'd like to convene the City Council Rail Committee meeting for Wednesday, December 16, 2015, where the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Sharp?
Here.
Chair Burr?
Here.
Councilmember Levin?
Still here.
Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
For present.
Thank you. And at this time, we provide the public an opportunity to comment on items that are not otherwise on the agenda, and we do not have any speaker cards. So we'll move to the next item, which is...
Do you want me to speak out?
Yes, I have...I'm a big speaker to fill it out.
Which is the recommissioning...thank you. Item one, okay.
That's where I want to go.
Yeah. The recommissioning of the rail committee and a discussion of rail issues and next steps. And I don't know if the staff want to make some comments?
Yes, we do have a brief presentation, perhaps just for the purpose of organizing some of the material and some thoughts in preparation for the committee's discussion and organizing the work ahead. So with that, perhaps Richard will walk through it.
Sure. So thank you Chair Burr and councilmembers. I apologize for my voice, but I'll do the best I can. So just quickly to walking through most of which was in your staff report, is a brief presentation going over sort of how we got to where we are today and some proposed next steps where we would welcome your direction as we move forward with the recommissioning of the rail committee and a lot of the important policy decisions that we have to make regarding the future of rail in our community. So with that, just to remind everyone how we got here. On October 13, 2015, the Palo Alto City Council made two motions related to rail. A key element of one of those motions was the recommissioning of the Palo Alto Rail Committee. Outlined in this presentation in the staff report is staff's proposal of how to address the elements...there were nine of them...of the motions that council passed on October 13. Following the presentation, staff would welcome the rail committee's direction on how to proceed with a number of things. So just to bring everyone up to speed and remind everyone, we use a lot of acronyms and here a few: SEQA, CHSRA, CSS, EIR, HSR. That's what they mean. For anyone in the public, there are handouts available, so if you'd like to follow along, you can use the key there. So broken down for you in the PowerPoint are the two motions by category. So we tried to take the nine different...we tried to take the nine different elements of the two motions and put them into categories based on their current status. So parts of the motion that have been completed or in the process of being completed are: the mayor has reappointed the rail committee, obviously, we're here today, and staff is pursuing interim grade separation safety measures through Section 130 funding. So work is underway at the staff level with the California Public Utilities Commission regarding enhancements at the Churchill Crossing. These are mostly going to be striping and signaling changes, but we were approved for that funding, and we're working to do some moderate safety improvements there to help with the number of daily bicycle and pedestrian crossings we have at those two locations. And joining me now is Josh Mello from Planning, who can also comment on this, if you have any updates beyond that. No? Okay.
No, I don't. Well, I'm getting up to speed. Section 130, yeah, we did come to agreement on a scope with Caltrain and the California Public Utilities Commission. That was submitted in October.
Okay. So parts of the motion that staff is currently addressing are: staff is working through regional groups and with Caltrain in advocating for funding of Caltrain grade separations in the order of 15 percent of the funds raised by a potential county sales tax measure. And also, staff is working that the criteria...advocating, really, that the criteria for allocating funds to specific grade separation be driven by need factors. So instead of a, for example, first come, first served process, we want to make sure that if we are able to obtain that 15 percent, or even if it's less, or even if it's more, that the funds go to the projects that need it most, not necessarily those that are fully designed or proposed first. Parts of the motion that staff is proposing additional staff for in the form of a program manager is developing a first-phase circulation study, which council directed staff to do. And the second is developing a preliminary plan for a context-sensitive solution approach to addressing rail impacts in the future of rail in Palo Alto. So this would include using the CSS approach for SEQA analysis related to the High Speed Rail Authority's proposal to do environmental clearance on the San Francisco to San Jose project segment, and also preliminary design for grade separations in Palo Alto. So just for those of you who don't know, CSS, context-sensitive solutions, as defined by the organization's website, is a collaborative interdisciplinary holistic approach to the development of transportation projects. CSS...the CSS approach, which is specific, is guided by four core principles: strive towards a shared stakeholder vision to provide a basis for decisions; demonstrate a comprehensive understanding of context; foster continuing communication and collaboration to achieve consensus; and exercise flexibility and creativity to shape effective transportation solutions while preserving and enhancing community and natural environments. So council gave clear direction that they felt that if this approach was applied to the prob...you know, the issue...I won't say problems, but I'll say the issues facing Palo Alto related to rail, specifically grade separations, we feel that it's likely this could result in the best outcome for our community. And just to be clear on one issue, under the current California High Speed Rail Authority timeline, which I'll touch on later in the presentation, it would effectively be infeasible for CSS to be applied with what they've proposed. So in terms of a program manager, which would manage the circulation study and the CSS process for grade separations, which staff is proposing, we're currently in the process of developing an RFP for that, Program Management Expertise, and hope, it says, excuse me, to retail, but to retain an individual or firm with rail expertise to take the lead on these items and other activities needed to advance grade separations in Palo Alto. And this is whether or not high-speed rail proceeds. There's a strong feeling amongst staff, and also I know a number of councilmembers have expressed both through our last meeting and through study sessions, that we really need grade separations whether or not high-speed rail comes. So I hope that's not an earthquake. Parts of the motion that staff recommends would be addressed through a letter, which was included in your agenda packet, are that the full CSS approach process be used by the High Speed Rail Authority. And that letter would go to both the CEO of Caltrain and the CEO of the High Speed Rail Authority. And also, in that letter would be recommendation that the timeline for the EIR for the San Francisco to San Jose segment of the High Speed Rail project include adequate time for the CSS process. So in terms of discussion topics for today, timing and amount of funding recommendations. So funding would be specifically related to the program manager, which we've proposed. Scope of services, what the program manager's role would be, how you envision context-sensitive solutions for Palo Alto's grade separations working, and then what different advocacy roles, different members of the Palo Alto community would take on. What advocacy role would the rail committee have? What advocacy role would the city manager have, a program manager, et cetera? In terms of approach to stakeholder engagement, adjacency issues, so how working with our partners can enhance our...excuse me, our neighboring cities can enhance our ability to achieve our objectives, and how we can use regional coordination and coalition building to accomplish some of what we're trying to do here today. We'd also like to make sure that we're developing and using value capture in the best interests of the city. And then we'd like to do all this in the context of the Comprehensive Plan CAC. So just in terms of what the California High Speed Rail Authority's SEQA next steps are, they plan to release a draft EIR in the winter of 2016, so one year from now, and they plan to cert...
No, no. Months from now.
They...I...
All right. I'm sorry, you said in the winter of 2016 for...
The draft.
The draft, so that...
Right. So not...they've pushed back their timeline slightly.
Okay, but winter of 2016 isn't a year from now.
So winter of 2016, 2017?
Yes, I should say December of 2016.
Okay.
December of 2016 was what I was implying there. And then with the final EIR certification coming in December of 2017. So basically, one year for the draft, two years for the final. And that is noted at the bottom, is for the San Francisco to San Jose project segment.
I'm sorry, Richard, is this a recent update?
The recent update was on the final EIR. They had originally said that they were hoping to have it done by the summer of 2017. They've since dropped that back to what they're calling winter of...
When and how did they announce that?
I read it on the...they had a link to the Caltrain website, and I read it on there.
So they have notified cities of this?
Yeah, I have...the city of Palo Alto has not received that in writing, to my knowledge. And then finally, motion elements that staff recommends should be addressed in the future. This one's pretty straightforward, is to check back with the council when the sales tax measure starts to take shape. So just in terms of where the sales tax measure stands, as of now, December 2015, the MTC is analyzing and modeling the unconstrained project list. In August 2016, we have the deadline to put a sales tax measure on the November 2016 ballot. And then in November of 2016, so 11 months from now, it's likely that a sales tax ballot measure will go to the voters. So with that, we welcome your questions and comments.
Let me first ask, just in terms of our agenda, the agenda items one and two, it's not clear how we distinguish between them. So we just had a report that, kind of on all this background. Does staff have any clarification on the distinction?
It actually really relates to number two, more so than number one, and so perhaps we should have waited on making that presentation.
Okay. So in that case, should we go ahead and hear from a couple of members of the public who wanted to speak to one, but really, we have essentially one blended topic today? Does that sound fine?
Yeah.
Okay. So our first speaker is Mike Brady, to be followed by Adina Levin. You have three minutes.
Where's the microphone?
The mic is in there.
Good morning. My name is Mike Brady. I've been a lawyer with Roper's Majeski in Redwood City for 48 years, and I'm also a mediator and arbitrator with ADR Services Inc. in San Francisco and San Jose. I have been the...congratulations on reactivating your committee. I've met over the years many times with Mr. Burr, Mr. Philso, Mr. Dubois about the rail matter. I'm the original attorney in the TOS lawsuit centered in Kings County. That's the lawsuit that seeks to prevent the construction of the entire statewide high-speed rail project. That lawsuit was filed almost five years ago and is set for trial in February 11 in a couple of months. I have been trying...I'm here today also with Paul Jones, the chairman of the Atherton Rail Committee. I've met with that committee for almost five years on a regular basis to update high-speed rail on the peninsula. Now, I hope to interest you in joining with Atherton in a potential lawsuit to prevent high-speed rail from coming to the peninsula. My existing lawsuit is centered in Kings County because that's where the project was going to start. Now you're rather upset to hear they're trying to rush through the EIR and so forth for high-speed rail on the peninsula. And you know the reason for that? Perhaps you don't. Very recently, it was discovered that for 25 months, the High Speed Rail Association has concealed from Congress, the state legislature, and from all the cities that the cost of the project is going to be $9 billion higher, and their own contractor advised them of this, and also said it's almost impossible for you to get under or over the mountains in Southern California. So when they face that difficulty, you might see Southern California abandoned for a long time. Where does the focus then go? To the peninsula. So watch out, be very careful. I look forward to meeting with you, be happy to brief you on our lawsuit. One of the main difficulties about the legalities of high-speed rail on the peninsula is this: they never submitted a funding plan for the peninsula. They did for the Central Valley. Proposition 1A, our lawsuit is entirely based on Proposition 1A. Proposition 1A says no money can be appropriated for a project unless a funding plan is first submitted to the legislature. None was ever submitted for the peninsula. One was submitted for the valley. So that's a huge legal problem. No money can be given to you for anything until that is satisfied. The mood in the legislature has changed. High-speed rail is not as popular as it was in 2008 when it was passed. The governor, of course, is still strongly in support of it, but it would be very interesting to see whether a funding plan would pass on a statewide basis. And finally, I would just mention that there are three initiatives which are currently getting stamped and approved to go out for signatures statewide. One would repeal the whole project. One...two of them would take the existing money in the High Speed Rail Bond Fund, $8.5 billion, and give it to State Water Projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adina Levin, to be followed by Herb Borak.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm glad that the rail committee is reconvening to deal with many issues and opportunities relating to rail at this time. And one of the things that I'd like to mention with regard to the potential scope of the committee relates to some renewed activity about Dunbarton Rail and the Dunbarton Corridor. There is...has been...even though this project has gotten killed a couple of times in the last few years, there's really a very strong interest, particularly in West Bay communities, to bring this back. And most recently, Facebook has generously offered $1 million to study transportation options on the Dunbarton Corridor, starting with the segment from Redwood City to Menlo Park East Palo Alto by Facebook, and then potentially continuing over the bridge. There's been some expressions of interest in private operators to do a public-private partnership utilizing that rail corridor, which has interesting implications for the region and would need scrutiny for the aspects of the business plan, and also for the constellation of risks and benefits that you want to have on a public-private partnership to get the best balance of public and private benefits. There's a next step here. The Stamp Trans Board is going to be accepting the offer and kicking off managing the analysis of transportation options on the corridor in their January board meeting. And one, to take a step back, one of the opportunities would be to have connections from the bridge into Palo Alto, where many people do come and work here from the East Bay, as well as there's been some interest from large corporations in Mountain View to bring people over from there. One issue and risk is that in order to study the bridge, apparently, this needs to go back through the Alameda County Transportation Commission, which is the entity that has killed this project three times in the last few years. And any political connections there, doing some investigation to find out any point of leverage, and would be happy to talk to staff or any councilmembers regarding that after this meeting. So that is something that the council may wish to include as part of the agenda. And lastly, for the agenda, there are issues relating to downtown extension and its funding. That would be a beneficial project for Palo Alto and the rest of the community, so that may be another item to be able to include in scope.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Herb Borak, to be followed by Roland Lebron.
Oops. Sorry. Good morning, Chair Burr and committee members, and also 1, 2, 3, three members of Policy and Services Committee. The committees are advisory to the council, and in looking at the agenda, it's hard to tell whether, the way it's been formed, whether this is seen by staff as a committee that makes recommendations to the council or talks to staff about how they're implementing council direction. And even such a simple thing as discussing a spokesperson, well, that's only something that the council itself can determine. In regard to the draft letter from the mayor reflecting adopted council policy from its October 13 meeting, I would recommend that the language on context-sensitive solutions be expanded. The reason is, the High Speed Rail Authority is committed to context-sensitive solutions for the design of more intensive development around high-speed rail train stations. And it's the policy of the city council to be opposed to a high-speed rail station in Palo Alto. Looking back at the California's advocating responsible rail design site for the discussions on CSS in 2010, there were a number of different issues related to high-speed rail besides the station environment for CSS solutions. And I would think it would be important to mention those various issues that you would use that for, so that high-speed rail doesn't turn around and say, "Well, we're already doing that. It's in our project." In regard to the environmental impact report schedule, the agenda materials for the authority's finance in order committee meeting this month contains detailed schedules for the environmental impact reports for the various sections, including precise dates for when they think those things will be occurring. Finally, in terms of a possible VTA measure, one of the things that's been discussed, a number of people, including supervisor Semidion, was that the thing that would probably defeat that measure would be bus rapid transit. And I'm concerned of people chasing after money for grade separations on the peninsula in exchange for support for that, that somehow that would slip through, whereas the proper thing to do there would have language in the measure that would prohibit the bus rapid transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Roland Lebron. And anyone else who wishes to speak, please bring their part forward.
So, can you hear me? Okay. So, season's greetings, and happy to see you all back, and I'm glad that we finally reform after this hiatus here. Like to touch on three things, is the grade separations, the environmental clearance, and then some of the items Borak and Herb and Adina touched on. On the grade separation and the funding, is that you have to be realistic. We're talking about millions and potential risk much over $1 billion worth for Caltrain. And you cannot expect the VTA to basically taking this money and dumping it down, you know, basically, the Caltrain, High Speed Rail money pit. So you have to be realistic about that. This would be a tough sell. So I'd like to suggest you is a different approach, is that you reach out to the VTA and explain to them what you're trying to do, and then ask them to take you to the East Bay and show you what it is for power. They did four grade separations for Union Pacifics over there, so they know how to do this with a live railway. And they can show the approaches that they took, the engineering, and also what their costs were. On the environmental clearance and the context-sensitive solutions, the key here is that the peninsula will be below 125 miles an hour, which means that the High Speed Rail Authority do not have exclusive rights to get environmental clearance. Anybody can get it, that's the VTA, Sam trains, Caltrain, or whatever. One approach you should be looking at is maybe the VTA should be assuming responsibility for getting environmental clearance in the peninsula. The key is 125 miles an hour. You keep it below, anybody can do this. Just to clarify the dates on the environmental clearance, they're talking about scoping comments in two to three months, followed by the draft in the winter. Okay, so that's probably where the confusion arose. And in closing, on the points that Adina made, this is actually, it's a joint effort between Facebook and Stanford. I don't know if you know, but Stanford are about to, you basically start a new campus in Redwood City. And it's a joint effort with them. Right now, it's primary focus coming from San Francisco. And so it's basically linking the Fourth and King, all trains bay, and basically go directly to Facebook. Now, I'd like, I don't know if you're familiar with this, we have a potential project on a balance measure, which is called the VTS Sprinter Project, which is going to be basically providing additional traffic from the south. It might go as far as Diriden. Right now, it's going as far as Blossom Hill, but it goes up towards Elvizo and it turns back, goes back and forth. Once Dunbarton reopens, and I assure you, we're never going to reopen this bridge, it'll be a tunnel, it'll be a high-speed tunnel, minimum 125 miles an hour, probably keep it at 124 so somebody else can get the environmental clearance. Then we'll have a potential to have a loop. That star from the south will go to Diriden, one train will go to the East Bay, go across Dunbarton, come back down to Diriden. The other train will go up the peninsula and loop back and come back down the other way. So we'll have a loop for the Sprinter system. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's...oh, I'm sorry, you are going...
So, good morning. As a former member of the rail committee, I'm delighted it's reopened up again. So just three quick comments. One is CSS, and so the way I like to think about it is really kind of rail and community. So how do you move a lot of people through the community? So it's not really just an obstacle to, you know, high-speed rail. It's really the community...it is kind of give and take between the community and getting people through. So... people through. So, I mean, I always think of it as, I mean, do you want to have more transit going through bike pad, or do you want to have more auto traffic going through? Especially with the traffic getting so bad recently. It is, I mean, I think people do realize there are trade-offs to be made and how do we minimize impacts. I wanted to reinforce Adina's comment about Dunbarton Rail, that there is very exciting new possibilities coming up and it has, and it's similar to the fiber optics discussion where there's kind of open access network plus kind of a public or private service providers. And there's a service provider which, who is kind of exploring the possibility of Dunbarton Rail, so that's very exciting. And then you meant, and as you know, I was involved in the Peninsula Cities Consortium, and so I just wanted to reinforce the point that it is very powerful to have, you know, cities work together and speak with one voice. I serve on Mid-Penn Regional Open Space, and unfortunately, there is no Mid-Penn Transit or Transportation Agency. And in a way, you know, the Rail Committee or the regional consortiums working together can have that role.
Thank you. So, now returning to our agenda, I'm thinking through the best way for us to begin to have We have, maybe we should, we have maybe two different categories today. Anything that requires guidance in the nearer term and then essentially trying to work out a work plan for the coming years. So, maybe because the work plan is a deeper subject, should we make sure that we cover today the actions in the near term?
Well, it seems like another way to do it would be by category, this A, B, and C. Talk about grade steps and high-speed rail and the sales tax.
Well, if we did it that way, trying to cover these things in the next 55 minutes could bog us down, and then we might risk that we didn't have time to address some of the things that are most immediate. So that's, I don't know, but I'll go by your preferences. Thoughts?
I mean, yeah, I wonder if we should let the calendar dictate the discussion. And as you were saying, things that need a little more direction to staff earlier next year should be discussed today. And then when we reconvene earlier next year, we can see what hasn't been covered, but we definitely want to cover the more timely issues.
And I would hope that today we'll at least be able to have a preliminary discussion on the work plan. I'm not saying that it's one or the other, but I just want to, would want to make sure that we get done what has timeliness associated with it. Okay. So then amongst the things that have time constraints, it seems that the letter to the Rail Authority is timely. And Richard, on the VTA sales tax, do we have any real update since the council had a last discussion on it?
Sure. Why don't I take a shot at that, and Josh, you may want to reinforce as well. Primarily, the activity of late has been among the committees and specifically the Technical Advisory Committee, which is made up of staff of various agencies throughout the county. There has been discussion of the criteria, and I think at this point, you're describing it as VTA staff floating. Some concepts of how funding would be allocated among different categories of transportation, whether it be grade separations, highway, street maintenance, and the like. So those conversations are ongoing. Among other agencies, City of Palo Alto has been talking with North County, West Valley Cities in order to try to maintain a, sorry, or--
Unified front?
Unified front or a collective position. And at this point, it is focused largely on the need to perhaps de-emphasize Bart as a central component or a primary component of the measure, and also desire to look beyond the street maintenance-specific program. So opening the door to more multimodal, both planning as well as investment. The next steps there will be some additional conversations involving both staff as well as the VTA board members representing North County and West Valley. So expect that that will extend into January.
And you mentioned that they're kind of floating some alternatives on how the funding allocations. Can you share elements of that that we've expressed, the council expressed, our position on foremost, the grade steps and secondarily, other multimodal funding?
It's been fairly fluid. Josh, do you have any specifics in there?
Yeah, I do. So the last TAC meeting--
These are pretty-- It feels like you're--
The last TAC meeting was actually canceled. It was scheduled to occur on Friday, and VTA actually asked the North County and the West Valley Cities to attend a specially-called meeting at VTA. And it seems like, you know, everyone's kind of coming around to the fact that this supplemental mobility study needs to be done for the North County, West Valley, on a pretty accelerated schedule. They actually circulated a draft scope of work for that study. It's also appearing as though there's somewhat of a consensus forming around the fact that Santa Clara County and VTA need to have a similar program to what is done in San Mateo County around grade separations, where there's a, you know, dedicated funding and a competitive process that uses objective criteria to fund the advancement of grade separations. I think 15% of the total funding is the last table that I saw, very, you know, very initial number. So I think there is kind of consensus forming around the fact that some type of grade separation program needs to be created.
They had a, I mean, they were working on a process with evaluation criteria and scoring, and they have all those projects that were submitted. Are they actually talking about going away from that, or are they still proceeding with that process?
So, yeah, the other update is the unconstrained project list for the county sales tax.
Further away for some reason, it's echoing.
The unconstrained project list was submitted--
[laughing]
The unconstrained project list was submitted by VTA to MTC to do modeling and analysis. You know, they have to do air quality modeling and traffic impact analysis. That's underway right now. I don't expect that they'll be able to model grade separation projects. You know, there's certain types, categories of projects that just don't fit into the standard modeling. So that's kind of what's underway now, and they'll be presenting kind of the performance of the individual projects to us probably in early 2016.
So it sounds almost like a dual process, like they're continuing with what they had done, but starting to talk about maybe a study. But it's not clear, like this idea of funding projects based on need versus kind of first come, first served, has that been talked about?
Well, the unconstrained project list is fairly large, so I think it captures, you know, there's some categorical program-type submittals that are in there. So I think, you know, there's some ability to modify that unconstrained project list to meet, you know, what may come out of this North County-West Valley study and, you know, other initiatives.
But Tom was raising this question of whether projects will be ultimately prioritized based upon first come, first served, like even amongst the grade steps? Or I forget how you described it in your first part of your comments, of basically--
Carve out--
A set aside, in effect, of dollars--
What is a decision of which--
Yeah.
Basically so.
Like the--
Yeah, competitive.
Yeah, so San Mateo County uses a similar process to what the state uses for the Section 190 program, which looks at, you know, the amount of rail traffic, a history of collisions, you know, a whole host of different factors to kind of prioritize grade separation. San Mateo County uses a similar formula to award the funds through their program. I think that's kind of the way the wind is blowing, but there are a lot of grade separations in Santa Clara County that are further along than ours. So I think, you know, one of the criteria may be, you know, has environmental documentation been completed? Has, so I think it's, you know, I think it's still in our best interest to get moving and catch up to some of the ones there, even if it is a purely objective.
Well, yes, but I think that even while we may begin to accelerate our progress, we've already taken a position, and I think if we need, we can discuss that further, where we believe it's critical that it be based on the objective criteria and not just a sequential whichever is furthest along gets funded and which is maybe most in need or most important does not. And--
So, are you advocating that we continue to move forward to make it shovel-ready? What we're looking at doing, or do you think we should? I mean, I was unclear. And I agree with what you said, I was unclear what that means in a practical application in terms of going forward or not.
Yeah, I would say that the most important immediate thing is that we advocate that the criteria be set up based on objective criteria, not who's most shovel-ready. And then we, one of the things that, you know, as we go into the grade separation is that I expect that based on the council discussion recently, that we will begin the process of defining our requirements better, but that's going to take some time.
I also see us having a bit of a conundrum on this in terms of, there's grade separations, and there's this notion of a trench that we're talking about. And if you're moving a grade separation forward, it can be different than looking at a trench, you know, in terms of, I mean, if we're not, we're going to do a trench, it's different than grade separating a particular intersection. And I think everyone else is grade separating a particular intersection and doing, how do we separate Churchill, or how do we separate Charleston, right? We're looking at doing a trench, and I think there's some sort of sense of how do we put that together so that happens as opposed to focusing on a particular intersection?
Well, it's, whatever we may come up with as our design recommendations for the city, they're quite a ways away. And so if we have the set of criteria be adopted that are based upon who's farthest along, it affects us the same way. So I don't know that we have that conundrum. And that would be part of what we dive into as we have a deeper analysis of our alternatives. But in my mind, either way, we need to make sure that the selection criteria are set up based upon the objective basis rather than where anyone stands on being shovel-ready. That seems to me our most immediate need, and then that gives us, opens the door for the additional considerations.
I do think we should be careful with our language, and maybe for now, we should say trench slash grade separations, because I think when you only say one, you're not saying the other.
Right. I do think when we say grade separation, the rest of the world out there thinks a typical grade separation project--
Either under or--
Right, either under or over.
So until we decide, until we decide, maybe we should, you know, say both. But I think we started talking, I don't know if we're ready to go back to the letter. I guess I'm not really sure again what, how we're attacking this today, but--
Well, the letter is on the high-speed rail subject, so let's first go to make sure that we're aligned on the direction on the VTA tax.
I think we are. I think even what Greg was saying was that that's an important first step, is making sure that we continue to advocate for the San Mateo County approach, I'll call it for ease of words, and not first come, first served, not first ready, first served.
And again, we're talking about grade steps, but I think we're talking more generally that the sales tax would allocate money to categories, and that those categories would be prioritized based on need. And I'm a little bit concerned that they're far down the road on a different process, which was scoring all these projects, and some of that criteria was how ready the projects were. So I don't know if they're really changing or not.
So first, are we-- I think we're clear, because we discussed this as council as well, that we want the criteria certainly within the dollars for grade separations, two things. One, they don't preclude other options, they're dollars toward respective places where there are grade crossings. And second, that it be based on objective criteria rather than who's most shovel-ready. And are we--
Yeah.
--consensus on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And so we want to make sure on that. And then the second thing that Tom was raising is, what, how are they proceeding on this huge bucket of every project that they asked anybody to submit on? And where does that fit in with where they are now?
I think the answer I would give you is we're not quite clear on what the discussion is going to be once the results of the modeling and analyses are done. I imagine it'll be a collaborative back-and-forth process between the different jurisdictions, you know, advocating for their individual projects and with a focus on, you know, objective criteria, hopefully.
Well, so I'm concerned, I mean, there's been a lot of work done. They've come up with a set of objective criteria, and I think they were working on a scoring mechanism. And again, there seemed to be a lot of momentum already, like those criteria were developed, you know, over a period of time.
I guess the good news about that is if they're using objective criteria for selection of the other projects that would support our position that they should use objective criteria for which grade separations are done and when.
So when we say they, there's MTC, there's VTA, and there's Caltrain, who's making this decision?
VTA, this is the VTA measure.
Right, so on the VTA measure level, will Caltrain make the decision of which, or will VTA actually make the decision of which grade separations?
So the particulars of how the program would operate have not yet been determined. Right now, it's just kind of let's put some money in a bucket for grade separations and less emulate the San Mateo County process where they do, you know, they award it based on objective criteria. The conversation hasn't gotten to the point of, you know, how those decisions would be made. I would imagine it would be VTA, you know, using some type of criteria.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. It's VTA's dollars, our dollars through VTA, and they would be doing that. I would certainly think that that would also be in collaboration with both the cities and Caltrain, but I think the decision authority is within. The way we had this structured, we actually moved kind of from the speakers, we were speaking to item one, and now we're on two. And even though there's some crossover there, we have a speaker who wanted to speak to item 2C, Dean Levin, so why don't we go ahead and do that? Adina?
Okay, so what can you say specifically on 2C and the VTA measure? Thank you for supporting the program versus project approach to grade separations. And that's language that might be helpful to use, actually spur in their, you know, think tank vision for VTA and communication with execs is trying to enhance this concept of having more program-based funding rather than specific project-based funding. So that's language that might be used and recognized. With regard to the focus of the Caltrain-related funding, having substantial funding for grade separations is important, but I am wondering whether shifting the focus from a mix of capacity improvements to 100% grade separations is something that would be accepted and embraced by other cities, by the employers like Stanford and Google and LinkedIn, that really deeply depend on Caltrain being able to create more passengers, and by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, which, you know, doesn't have the same micromanaging role that they did before, but is, will still be influential in getting it passed. So I suspect that with the rail rider and the company-- So, I suspect that with the rail rider and the company constituency, you know, including capacity is gonna wind up being important. Two more thoughts, the idea of return to source, if you have good pavement condition, use the money for a local need instead, is a good idea and might get some traction. And lastly, on the concept of program versus project, there, Palo Alto was the first and the pioneer in thinking about its proposed expressway project as instead a program, and being able to solve congestion on pavement utilizing transportation demand management, not just road widening. And there are other cities that are interested in using this approach in areas in their jurisdiction, and there are some governance issues relating to really being able to make that transition. So, that may be something that Palo Alto, as the pioneer, might speak up for, and also potentially work with other cities, including San Jose, that are interested in that sort of transition, where some of the expansion-only methods don't work for them either.
Just one quick comment, if I could. I think, you know, as we're talking with VTA, I think we wanna treat grade separations as a separate category from Caltrain improvements, and I don't think we should, I mean, obviously it's gonna be more projects of money, but we don't wanna have that be the same category.
And is it correct that if they're using the San Mateo County model, they had the 15% toward grade separations, and then they have a different discussion of what dollars would go for other capacity, like platform lengthening? Okay, great, we have one more speaker, and that's it, Roland Lebron.
Thank you, so, to give you a little bit of clarity on questions you've been asking, you need to look at the Envision Silicon Valley process, and the website is envisionsv, Dr. Rog. You're gonna see what the current thinking is there, in terms of how they're gonna break up the $6 billion, right now it looks like a billion and a half for BART and 800 million for Caltrain. Now, when they say Caltrain, you've really got to also understand, some of that money is gonna be going to Estoril, because we're gonna have to do some massive changes at Estoril for the BART interface, and it's gonna be a combination of BART and Caltrain funding that's gonna go into the end, I think. Now, as you can see, the question that you had about grade separations, the only role Caltrain has in the Envision is to provide input. And I've actually seen two projects, which supposedly are Caltrain projects, out there in San Carlos and West Virginia. I can assure you, these projects, they got nothing to do with Caltrain, they're actually pushing grade separation for high-speed rail. And the reason they're doing this is that right now, they got two tracks, and one of those two tracks is Union Pacific tracks, and Union Pacific, Pacific, a flattled, then you're not gonna actually file this. So, they have got to build a third track, and right now, they're talking about grade separations on either side of Highway 280, and nobody knows where the funding for the bridge is gonna come for the third track across Highway 280. That's probably a hundred to 150 million dollars. So, just to give you some context about what's going on that day.
Thank you. All right, so, have we addressed the VTA issue, Roland? So then, let's go ahead and, on the high-speed rail advocacy, we have the issue of this draft letter, and let me just share, I shared the council meeting on this, that State Senator Jerry Hill facilitated a meeting between himself, Dan Richard, and me, now, probably close to two months ago, which was as a follow-up to issues I had been raising as this EIR was proceeding, about both how rapidly it was scheduled to be done, the communication or lack thereof with cities, and what process should be used going forward. One of the things that we discussed was, and I should add that the High-Speed Rail Authority had a webinar call for local elected officials back, what, three months ago, Tom? And Tom, and Richard, and others from, I don't know if Ed was in on it, but several of us were, Palo Alto was pretty well represented, I was up there at the PB office in the city and had a chance to speak with rail authority representatives before and after, and made the same points, that this very accelerated process, even as just an EIR process, for such a complicated EIR, was unrealistic, and would be kind of ram-rotting this going forward. But also, that the High-Speed Rail Authority had actually made a commitment back in the, I think, 2009 business plan, to use CSS as the process for developing a plan at that time for the full four-track system on the segment that the peninsula is part of. And it was the only segment in the state that they'd made that commitment for, and that process was moving forward with, you know, imperfections in it, and then when the blended system went through, that, the need for that went by the wayside for the time being, and they have argued under the technicality that, as they brought this back forward, and I said, "This should be CSS again," they said, "Well, technically, we only approved it for that Peninsula Rail Program, which was the four-track system." But Dan Richard ended up agreeing that he was open to a dialogue on that, and agreeing to hold an upcoming meeting with Palo Alto officials to discuss the process going forward without agreeing to CSS in advance. And so that's some important background to this. I'd also say that in terms of whoever we may address this to, at the High-Speed Rail Authority, Jeff Morales is the CEO, but I would say that Dan Richard is not only the chairman of the board, he is the executive chairman, meaning that the CEO of the authority reports to the executive chairman in all practical purposes. And Dan Richard is appointed by the governor and reports directly to the governor, and is engaged with him. So, he's the most important figure in this, rather than the CEO who is more responsible for execution than for policy. So, in that context, I think Dan Richard's the most important person to address this to, but we certainly want to include the others. So, did folks want to wade in on the letter? There was a comment that, well, under CSS, I really think that we need to convey a bit of the history of this and its value and purpose, and not assume that everybody understands why it's important and what was agreed to in the past. And I can tell you that the High-Speed Rail representatives, the staff level, and they have a team for this section that is now out of San Jose, the head of the team is Ben Tripisus.
Triposis.
Triposis, and he was formerly San Jose's lead on transportation and the high-speed rail. And then, they hired Bruce Fukujie, who we know, who has worked with the city of Palo Alto, and had worked on the CSS process before, when it was proceeding back in the '09, the 2011 period, I think it was. And then Guy Preston, who is, I think, the lead engineer on this, former Caltrans person who, when I raised this issue at the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group, and he was the High-Speed Rail representative there, he spoke up and said, you know, "I didn't know it was part of this segment in the past," but he had worked with CSS through Caltrans, and thought it was an outstanding program, and was supportive of that. I think that that did not represent yet a position of the High-Speed Rail Authority, but I would just say that we have two of the key staff people on this region who think highly of it. And Dan Richard had actually worked with something like that with BART, and had seen great success, but he has trepidation on whether CSS is somehow a way to derail their initiatives. And in reality, it's an open process, it doesn't predetermine outcomes one way or another. Tom?
Yes, so I had two thoughts on this letter. One is a small one, which is, I think we should primarily address this to the High-Speed Rail Authority, in the way it's kind of Caltrain and high-speed rail. I wanna flip it, if we wanna keep Caltrain as part of the letter. The second thing, it's in terms of timing, you know, as much as possible, I really think this should be a multi-city discussion, and it would be great if this was a multi-city letter. If we don't feel like we have time to do that, you know, maybe we go ahead and send a Palo Alto letter, but we would also maybe reach out to other cities' rail committees. You know, I'm not sure if that's something that staff can do easily, I think, and a lot of these things around rail, it may be good for our selected officials to actually reach out to our counterparts and do some of this work, more than having staff do everything. But, you know, those are my kind of two high-level thoughts on this.
If I might add to the, perhaps, your thinking on the specifics of the letter, certainly agree with Councilmember DuBois's point that having a couple of options. One is, since we already do have a venue for discussion, certainly of the North County, West Valley cities, that's an easy conversation to, or topic to bring to that conversation. As it relates to other cities, and specifically on high-speed rail, I would agree that having an elected moment would be very important. One additional point for consideration in the letter that the discussion brings up is, given that they're now in the phase of scoping the environmental document, the question of the project description itself will be very important, and it may be useful to make reference to the trench as an element of that project description as they're entering in. You know, there'll obviously be more detailed elements of the project that we'll wanna communicate back to High-Speed Rail Authority, but at the highest level and in the essence of the project description itself, there may be an element that you wanna address at this point.
I think there's a little bit of a strategy discussion here, right? I mean, if you bring up, if we're trying to get them to commit to CSS, and we bring up the trench, again, do they feel like they were expanding the scope too early?
Well, let me add to that, because I did discuss that with Dan Richard, and frankly, we've, over the last year-plus, we had had discussions, over a year ago, with Carl Guardino, as the leadership group was putting together, they're considering putting this VTA tax on the last ballot. And over a year ago, Carl's response was, he thought that that seemed very unreasonable. It's now becoming recognized that objective criteria need to include different physical environments at different areas where grade crossings need to occur, and where they're very constrained, whether Palo Alto or elsewhere, design alternatives such as trenching need to be part of the consideration, not the conclusion, but the consideration. And Dan Richard did not express kind of a, "That's a non-starter" concept at all. It was an acknowledgement that the objective circumstances of different locations on the corridor mattered.
I'm just concerned that, you know, calling out one solution in this letter, if the real purpose is to get them...
Oh, I'm sorry, does it have that?
No, it doesn't, what I heard Ed say was, maybe we should add trenching to the letter. I think if the focus is to get them to agree to CSS, that may, may or may not be a good idea.
Did you have language, Pat, that you thought we should add to the CSS to give them more clarity?
Well, rather than specific language, I would say that following kind of the numbered requests, and I think there should be a third one around communication, that we give a bit of a background of that, and not a long one, but that CSS had been agreed to by the rail authority for this segment under the PRP, and that it was our understanding and our belief that it would, whatever future iteration came forward of prospective high-speed rail on the peninsula, it would follow the same process. And then, second, briefly about why it's valuable, and this is something that really Dan Richard acknowledged. He basically said on, in terms of the timeline for the EIR, that they would not ram it through, that they would take as long as it took to do it right. And he asserted a lot of pride in the EIRs that they have done in the Central Valley, and believed, asserted his belief that they had taken the time and done them very thoroughly. A thorough EIR is quite different from a CSS process, and they've argued, "Well, we can do, you know, them in parallel," and to a great degree, the CSS informs the EIR, and you can't have the one follow the other, and they've kind of talked about CSS Lite and those different things. But I think that they, we should assert why CSS is the best way to not have a highly contentious outcome from their process, and to problem-solve without predetermining what those solutions may be. So that, those would be the two portions of that. If I might just add on the communication, this surfacing of, that they were moving forward with this EIR on a rapid scale, came about because members of CARD notified me that back in the August board meeting, this had been on their agenda and had moved forward. They made no engagement, and did not communicate this to the cities up and down the peninsula. They had their own plan, that they were beginning to figure they were going to have these public meetings, they had three, or actually four, San Francisco, Burlingame, San Jose, and Morgan Hill. Nothing between Burlingame and San Jose. And they just were doing all these things in a vacuum, so I requested that Caltrain agendize it for the Local Policymaker Group meeting. They brought Guy Preston to that meeting, and we engaged on that. But part of the issue that I've raised a number of times is, they, we shouldn't be blindsided by these important changes, they should be communicating them, and they agreed. And so now, on the one hand, it's good to hear that they're modifying their most aggressive timeline on the EIR. It's disappointing that the way we find out about it is because somebody saw something on a website, and rather than them just going and communicating clearly, that they had that intention. And naturally, it would be, I think, that they'd say before they take it to their board, they'd let our staff know that they intended to propose such a thing to the board. So, I think we should emphasize that there needs to be strong and transparent communication going forward on this.
Yeah, Josh?
I could just echo Ed's point about the scoping and the project description. I do think that's a rather immediate item, that we need to pay very close attention to the project description, and we need to ensure that the project description itself does not preclude grade separations being included as part of the high-speed rail project. And I actually attended the Burlingame meeting, and the comments that the HSRA staff made... And I actually attended the Burlingame meeting and the comments that the HSRA staff made led the public in attendance to believe that grade separations could possibly become part of the project itself. So that's what they were telling the public at the meeting. I think we need to make sure that the project description, we need to make sure that the grade separations don't just become kind of an afterthought mitigation measure that's identified for somebody else to complete, that it is possible for those to be included in the project description if they're appropriate.
Yeah, we've heard different comments on that. In that very first call three months ago, when we asked about grade separations, they said that there was perhaps funding for quad gates. But again, the initial discussion about the EIR was that they did not want to change anything because they want to use the electrification EIR. And so I think you're right, it's really critical that we watch how this project is described.
I'm just pulling up all my notes from that. I went back and listened to that, I recorded it, so I listened to that webinar and Ben had said that they had funding for quad gates. They also said, I'm trying to remember his exact wording, but they certainly would work collaboratively with cities around grade separations, but didn't make any commitment that they could or would fund them or be a portion of the funding. But they've also said that they're working with Sam Mateo on something along those lines and they haven't been entirely transparent with everybody else exactly what that means. And Dan Richard said that he acknowledged that grade separations would be a necessity ultimately for whether it be High Speed Rail, or he and I agreed that if High Speed Rail never came to the Peninsula, Caltrain would need to be expanding its number of trains per hour in a way very similar and ultimately have this, a comparable requirement for grade separations. And so at that level, there was an acknowledgement that ultimately grade separations will need to occur. As others in the, in this audience know well, that High Speed Rail Authority has great funding challenges for, even without looking at how to fund grade separations on the Peninsula. And I should add one other important thing, I think I mentioned at the council meeting, but there's been a lot of discussion and probably several different valid explanations of why this Peninsula EIR suddenly got back on the table. Now, the High Speed Rail Authority will, has asserted that it was in their last business plan to proceed, begin this process in this timeframe. But all the rest of their program is delayed and it was to be a segment that would be following the Southern California segment. And instead, it, without forewarning and with what was initially an 18-month timeframe, it raced forward. I probed a lot on that and finally, it was explained to me at the Parsons-Brinkhoff meeting that the High Speed Rail Authority in October would be presenting to their board the expressions of interest by the prospective private parties in the project and that they expected that those would be very strong and accelerate the whole High Speed Rail program in the state and that potentially the construction of the blended system on the Peninsula would move forward from what they had previously put as a 2029 completion date, whereas many of us had been thinking that it was more likely it would be pushed out. When those expressions of interest came out at the, and that's not the correct title on them, I forget what they're called, but at the October High Speed Rail Board Meeting, they were not what Ben had indicated they expected them to be and they were the other way. There was no substantive financial commitments and actually Dan Richard and the governor's other lead guy, Mike Rossi, who's a finance guy, really said these are not positive developments at all. And so the premise for this racing forward, as it was expressed to me and around the potential private funding, along with the leveraging of the cap and trade dollars and that they intended to be able to bond those, they can't bond them unless they're extended beyond what the legislature currently has committed to, which I think is 2020. And that will be a very important upcoming legislative matter. If the legislature gives long-term commitment of those dollars to the 25% of them to High Speed Rail Authority, which they currently have, then those would be significant dollars that the authority could then bond.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
Can the legislature even do that before those lawsuits are settled about the whole cap and trade system on the whole?
There are actually several legal problems that are faced around the cap and trade. Yeah, so there's, one is whether this is a proper use of those funds because the, is it Prop, what's the?
Thirty-two.
Prop thirty-two has the specific requirements for how those would be used and it's being challenged whether this project meets those requirements. There is another challenge as to whether the cap and trade, which was adopted by the legislature as a fee, was properly a fee. And was there, I forget if there was a third issue, but I'm not sure of the intersection of that. The legislature could act and there conceivably could still be legal challenges to their action. And I think the recent developments from the High Speed Rail Authority have, and the problems that have come out in the press in recent months have gone from kind of the legislature not really being very engaged on it and the public had kind of died down and the press had died down in their attention, to now there's a great deal of attention. I think that there's a very good chance the legislature and their oversight role and the upcoming business plan, which is the plan that is supposed to really be substantive on where they are going forward and that intersects with some of the other lawsuits. This coming winter, they're supposed to unveil it and I think by summer, the legislature is supposed to act on it. That's a big deal. And so the business plan, the funding for cap and trade are two big actions by the legislature that will have real bearing on this. Okay, so as is obvious, this is always a very complex issue. Are we fine with giving direction to staff on this letter to expand on the background and the purpose of CSS? And I would also advocate that we make a third point on what we are looking for in transparent and strong communication.
Maybe you could elaborate on transparent, strong communication, just so staff has a sense of what that would go in there.
Yeah, I think it's that they should communicate to not only Palo Alto, but all the affected cities and parties, any changes and intentions as they are considered or known and that they, that they will also seek input from those parties. And those are things that they've actually orally committed to doing and now they've gone back and done it again.
So I guess the other changes were to change who the letter is addressed to?
Right.
And to, again, I think we should have High Speed Rail first and Caltrain second.
One procedural question, whether the committee feels this is something that should go to the full council for information and that that direction come from the council or whether that would happen here at the committee?
On these changes?
Well, on the letter.
I think it should go to the full council on consent.
Sounds good.
Does holding off on this for three weeks change anything or four weeks change anything?
We don't have another meeting.
I think so.
That's right.
What about the idea, trying to do it for multiple cities? Should we get ours out on our own?
Yes, I think we should get ours on our own in parallel. And in fact, that template can be one that we could carry to other cities and use to try and get alignment there.
So on this consent item, do we want, do we want to specify that it should go to other cities and how are we going to do that?
I think that's something that staff can just do. I don't know that that needs to be, I don't know that council needs approval of that element. Because if we're gonna, if we are gonna wait until the January, we'd want other cities to start working on it before then, right? And so if we have to wait for council approval to have that be part of the strategy, then...
Just if it goes cold to other councils, I don't know how they would interpret it.
Yeah, so on an informal basis, there's no, there wouldn't be anything that would constrain members of the council from encouraging colleagues as they engage with them in other cities and kind of begin to get that consciousness going while we are ready to, are preparing to adopt this, I guess on the Fourth of January.
Yeah, and one thing that I wanted to ask earlier that reminded me is, could staff, so that we can do that and do our advocacy role with colleagues in other cities, is there a list of members of other rail committees in other cities or certain council members that are taking point on some of these things? I mean, just so we have, we know who most accurately to target. If that doesn't exist, then no problem.
I think that what's happened is that as the interests in this have died down, just like in Palo Alto, those efforts have, but we have the representatives on the Local Policymaker Group to Caltrain and those would be certain point people. And then we have representatives on the VTA transportation measures, so those are probably a couple of lists that would give us a better sense of who's most engaged.
But I think Mendel Park and Atherton have active rail committees and then I think there are a couple of Mountain View council members who are focused.
Could Richard circulate that to us?
I can put together a list that's as comprehensive as possible.
That'd be great. Don't spend a lot, I mean, just easy picking.
Yeah, who's doing rail for you.
Yeah, thanks.
So I'm kind of watching the clock. We've kind of touched on grade separations, but if we're done with High Speed Rail, could we spend a few minutes on trench slash grade separations? And then I think staff was also asking about the timing and funding on a project manager. I don't know if we need to comment on that.
Yeah, and then, so in addition to these things, I also had jotted down Dunbar and then we really want to begin to also look at how we leverage our community resources. And that was a great part of our rail initiative previously, pardon me. And so I think that's going to be something that we also want to look at is how do we pull our community resources into this process in some way, formally or informally, whether it's a citizen advisory committee to staff or to who. And that would, you know, ultimately, if we have CSS, then it would take a form there. But in the interim, I think we want to reengage these great community resources we have.
So I guess part of that is, we're talking about CSS in the context of High Speed Rail, but we're also kind of talking about it more generally. So do we start a CSS process around grade separation options just on our own now, you know, and not tied to High Speed Rail? And then the other thing is, you know, I'd like to see us focus on this grade separation issue. There is a private entrepreneur who's looking at Dunbar and Rail, so I would personally not want to spend a lot of time on Dunbar and Rail. I think they're both very large projects. And again, you know, I'd like to see us spend some mental capacity on this idea of the grade separations.
And if I may also add, for that purpose, as the committees considering this issue of grade separations, part of our next step is in the context of meet your budget consideration that will be coming back to the council and our thoughts as to what the scope of any request might be that we bring forward to the council. So clearly, the project management resource is a part of that mix and to the extent that CSS is something that we can get started as a part of that same timeframe, I think we'll want to take the committee's feedback in formulating our recommendations then.
One final comment is, before we get too far down the road, I'd really like to say that this could be a multi-city effort. And so kind of this idea of us starting CSS with a program manager, before we get there, you know, again, we talked about getting these rail, interested rail people from other cities, but I think we should talk a little bit about how we do some vandalism and discussion and determine whether it could be a multi-city effort or not.
And certainly, Mountain View and Mendel Park are the two cities that we would have the strongest potential interaction with.
I did see recently Atherton spending some money on some short-term improvements. I think we should reach out to them pretty quickly as well before they get too far down the road.
Okay, so let's figure out how we might pull this all together. We, on the future discussion of grade separations, staff has basically, has recommended a position. Where, again, Port Richard, where is that?
Slide five.
Oh, I'm sorry, on slide five.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, we have the staff reporters, like, well, really, it's...
If it's appropriate, I'd love to go into a little more detail on our thinking since the October thirteenth meeting.
Great.
We see direction from the full council. So we kind of are looking at a three-pronged approach to advancing grade separations in the city of Palo Alto. The first and foremost would be to get some expertise on board. So we envision a program manager, you know, maybe part-time, full-time, could be in-house staff, could be consultant. We're kind of leaning towards a consultant-type position. This would be someone who has years of, you know, decades of rail experience, experience with EIRs and SEQA documents for large rail projects. Ideally, an engineer who could, you know, really look, help us talk through the trenching option and the different options for grade separations and provide that kind of in-house civil and rail engineering experience that we don't currently have. They would also help us, you know, initiate the context-sensitive solution discussion around both, you know, at the October thirteenth meeting, we also got direction that you wanted us to look at circulation across the rail corridor and look at each of the different grade crossings, you know, separately and together to see how they function, you know, now, how they could function in the future possibly. So that would kind of be the first step for this program manager is to initiate that circulation study, have a community-wide discussion about the functions of the different grade crossings and then, you know, move into the public engagement process for the context-sensitive solutions around what the, you know, individual grade separations or grade crossings would look like, you know, and have that full community-wide discussion. At the same time, this person could potentially serve as our advocate for the, you know, the EIR process that's, you know, moving through High Speed Rail. And they would have the expertise that we need to kind of go toe-to-toe with the High Speed Rail Authority, you know, review all of the, you know, the project description, the mitigation measures, the impacts, you know, look at noise, traffic impacts, and they would serve as our, you know, our go-to person. And I think they'd also perform a valuable service in being able to support the rail committee in its work.
So I would say that I think that this sounds like a good approach. So I, I would say that I, I think that this sounds like a good approach. I want to make sure that you're familiar with, and, and those who, who weren't with our city back when we had a very active, uh, program, uh, on, on these topics, is I alluded earlier to community resources. Uh, in addition to what I think is, uh, probably a necessary staff position program manager role, uh, we have expertise in this community that will, um, uh, probably greatly surprise you on these issues and, um, this community and, and in the sub-region. And so I, I think that, uh, we need at the outset to, to understand the value of that and make sure that they are, uh, very much part of the resources that we're referring to. Um, and we had one speaker, Adina Levin, who wanted to speak on 2B. I, I'll, I'll go ahead and allow that. I just want to, uh, make clear ordinarily, when we'd have a, a topic, we have one opportunity to speak on, on the agenda item, not each sub-item, but, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and use the discretion. Go ahead, Adina. Can you make brief?
Really briefly, um, I think that the idea of getting other cities supporting on, uh, context-sensitive solutions is a really valuable and healthy thing, and particularly, um, some of the cities that have a history of supporting high-speed rail, um, not just the his- the cities that have a history of opposing high-speed rail, so that high-speed rail will perceive this not as a, well, here's the cities that are trying to stop a project. Um, these, these are cities that, that have issues and want to work collaboratively. And, um, that may include the city of San Francisco, where they have a really big problem with their 16th and 7th Street grade separation, where they, like, figuring out what to do in less than a year is basically impossible. And, um, also in San Jose, issues with the design of Deirdre Don Station, where that timeline may be difficult for San Jose. Um, so that's, um, uh, one key item. Uh, another item in thinking about the scope of working with high-speed rail, we mentioned grade separations as a critical topic. Um, other important topics are good, for, um, other cities are going to include those, uh, uh, station changes, um, but also potentially a mid-peninsula station, which has some significant, uh, trade-offs in the, um, uh, battle of these high-speed rails, talking about airport silent parking, which isn't appropriate on the mid-peninsula. Um, high-speed rail has kind of changed their tune on that and thinking about more transit-oriented, um, you know, the, there will certainly be drawbacks, but there will potentially be benefits in terms of having community capacity. And that's a key topic.
Thank you. And, um, I'm sorry, but we actually were planning on, uh, adjouring the meeting at 10, so I'm not accepting speaker cards after...
10 seconds?
10 seconds.
I strongly support the notion of reaching out to other cities, and you mentioned a list on the RTMG, absolutely. The letter should be addressed to Dan Richard and to California High-Speed Railroad, not Morales.
Great, thanks. Okay, so let's try to see if we can, uh, wrap up on this issue of a program manager. Do we, uh, want to have staff go to the council with, uh, and do we support that?
I want to understand the program manager. Are we hiring someone? Is this an consultant? How much money is this going to cost?
From where?
I, I'm not going to just say, let's go hire someone.
Should we have this discussion, uh, at our, have a January rail committee meeting and have that discussion?
I think that's probably good. Staff needs to flesh it out. If you need a staff report, I need to understand what we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, um, and, um... So we've, we've hit the, uh, the three major topic areas. Uh, do we, yeah, let's talk about anything that we need to kind of wrap up.
Thanks. So, um, I mean, it was encouraging to hear from Pat that some of the important players are becoming more open to the idea of a trench, um, because I've heard from some people that they kind of dismiss it out of hand. It, it would be helpful if, if staff could start accumulating a list of, um, you know, some of the arguments that people are making as to why it's completely impossible and infeasible, um, so that we can begin to address those. Um, and maybe, you know, if it's for our information also, I think it would be helpful.
Well, on that, if I might add, um, uh, some of those arguments have been around, uh, the, the costs. And we had our Hatchmont-McDonald preliminary grade separation slash trenching analysis. It looked at a couple of different, uh, scenarios. One of the things that I did discuss with Dan Richard, and he was attuned to, is that the, uh, the, the grade at which a, uh, a, uh, a surf- a trench at, at, uh, level surface goes into a trench very much affects the necessary length of the trench and the cost. And we saw that a 1% grade, uh, had, uh, a billion-dollar price or thereabouts, a 2% under the scenario that Hatchmont looked at, which is not the only scenario, uh, that's possible. Um, it, it halved it roughly, and that the cost difference in that case, uh, with we, when we looked at conventional grade separations and, uh, and the cost of land acquisition excluding the political impact of having to, uh, acquire 50 homes or something in our community, uh, very much narrowed it, uh, to the difference, I think, between 330 million versus 510, if I recall the numbers correctly. A 3% grade separation, if either the, 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 um, grade, uh, excuse me, the, um, freight type, uh, was modified or, uh, or freight requirements on the peninsula were changed, um, could, uh, uh, further narrow the differences in those costs. And then suddenly, it becomes much more feasible. And so that goes into a topic for January that I'd like to spend a little more time on is whether we want some, uh, some additional scenarios to be evaluated by Hatchmont-McDonald, uh, using the, the preliminary work they did, so it's not like starting from scratch. And, uh, and that probably is the biggest opposition, because I think if there, if the, the cost is not a significant difference, people don't object.
And that was my, yeah, just sorry to fall real quick, um, that was my kind of question is, I mean, there's cost, and I think that's all decisions that we make. And then there's also just, are we going to run into a creek? Or are we going to run into a, you know, things that would...
Well, and that is part of the cost, and that's what determines, so those two things are very intersecting.
But I think we really need to understand the freight and what the, you know, how that works and what rights that they have and...
We need approval for that.
That's right.
If a 3% grade is completely never going to happen, then it may not be worth it.
But it's, it's, that's, I, I don't think that is necessarily the case.
It may not be, that's why I said I think we need to understand the regulatory structure.
And I'll just say that, uh, at the time of the Peninsula Rail Program, in kind of the, uh, 2009 through 11 period, the, uh, the freight issue was emerging as, uh, a discussion with, there's a difference between, uh, who has the current freight rights and their customer base, the, uh, in, uh, the freight, uh, uh, users group.
I'm just saying we really need to understand that issue.
Absolutely, yes. It becomes, and, and, uh, and Dan Richard and I discussed this and the need to really pursue what are the freight alternatives as being critical to, uh, all these other decisions.
Yeah. So, so I think, uh, the echo here, I think there's, uh, the order here is critical. And before we run off, talking to other cities and having them just say, you guys are crazy. If there's a way that we could quickly, at a very high level, look at potential funding sources, again, what a multi-city effort would look like, maybe, again, I, it's difficult, but the high level of some of these engineering issues, I think that would go a long way before we start to reach out too much, so that we're, we're talking somewhat informed. I want to think, Adina, uh, there was a, a value capture thing by the MTC up in Oakland two days ago. I wasn't able to go, but she, she grabbed some extra packets. Again, so looking at all the methods available to us in terms of sources of funding, um, all the different, uh, you know, just, uh, special districts and things that are possible, capturing air rights. I, I think we need to have kind of a basic set of talking points, um, so that we can be more convincing and we can have something that seems, uh, you know, feasible.
And that sequencing is important. It's, it seems like there, that we may be able to have enough that we can explain to people why, uh, the full set of options should be considered as, as, uh, as at this point in time, uh, not precluded. But then the CSS process itself brings these people together. I mean, the freight people would be in that process.
But, yeah, before we get there, I see, really, I, I see it largely falling on, on us to do kind of some early PR evangelism.
Yeah, yeah. I'm saying there's, there's both elements. Um, okay, uh, so we, forward, let's, I think we've evolved into, what do we have on, on January? What we, what we have, going to the council is the letter. Uh, let's briefly try and wrap up with what we want to, uh, discuss in very depth in January. It sounds like one is, um, uh...
Position, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, further discussion of a, a program manager role, um, but also what Tom, uh, just brought up, which is, um, uh, uh, our engagement and, and the basis for it with, with, um, uh, other cities and, and parties on the, on the peninsula.
Just kind of a strategy for, for moving forward?
Yeah. Um, and, let's see, uh...
This sales tax is going to be here before we know it, right?
Yeah, so that update.
Yeah, when did that get put on the ballot? It's August, right?
Yeah.
It's the, it's the last.
It's the last time.
But I heard they've been thinking about June.
Right.
Putting it on the June ballot?
No, uh...
Approving it by June.
Approving it, sure.
So before, aft- before summer break, basically.
Yeah.
And I guess the other, uh, topic I'd like to have is, uh, more discussion on, on, uh, our own, uh, community engagement and, and, uh, kind of citizen advisory role. Because, uh, I just repeat some of what I said before, is that when we went through this before, we, we did not have, uh, anywhere near, uh, the bandwidth or the in-house expertise to know everything about all this stuff. And, uh, our, our, uh, ability to be knowledgeable and effective was greatly, um, expanded by, uh, the leverage of our community members.
Is that part, I kind of see that as part of the engagement strategy, but are you seeing that as different?
No, if we could break it up that, so we could, uh, that engagement topic could then have, uh, maybe two major parts. Uh, how we, uh, engage with surrounding cities and how we engage with, um, uh, community partners. That sound good? Great, so, yeah.
May I just ask, uh, if we're going to put the letter on consent, uh, for January, do you mind making a motion on that?
Uh, not at all, and, um, and it begs the question, do you, does this, um, uh, does the committee want to, uh, de- allocate, uh, uh, someone to, uh, review it with staff before it goes before the council? So that we don't, we hope, make sure that it, it looks good.
Well, we pretty much have the wording, so the staff's going to make changes in the wording on, on the communities, add the communication part you talked about, right?
There are a couple of pieces. CSS.
Communication, expansion on CSS, those are the main things.
I think it's fine if someone, if you want, I mean, the chair would like to...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, anyone want to make a quick motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, that it.
Well, I'll make the motion that we, um, forward the letter to council, that the chair reviews the letter just before it goes to council, and that if it is unanimous vote amongst us, then it would go consent.
And the letter incorporate the changes we discussed.
The letter incorporate the changes we discussed.
Great, second.
Okay, any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
All right, uh...
I didn't just see Tom vote.
Aye. Thumbs up.
Is that, uh, is that concluded today?
Works for me.
All right, great, thank you all very much. Oh, yes, oh, date of our next meeting? So, um, so we, we, we will need to have, uh, appointments to committees by the incoming mayor.
I think we should leave it up to the head.
Yeah.
I think for us to choose a date without knowing who's on the committee is not appropriate.
But this committee is not going to change. That's already been established.
Oh, it has?
It, it was established that this committee is...
Oh, okay.
When did that get established? How did that, how does that get established? I mean, the mayor makes the choice. So how does that get established? I mean, I don't...
I, I asked, and that's what was...
Okay. Okay, so...
That wouldn't make sense.
It wouldn't make sense.
Okay, so let's, how about if we, we, one, a date, uh, I don't think is dependent on who's on the committee and if we're assuming that, um, uh, kind of as a good faith, we're going to have the incoming mayor continue the composition, same composition of the committee. Let's just use those as working assumptions.
Yeah, and kind of Wednesday morning at this time?
Uh, yeah, um, so one thing about Wednesday morning is, you know, we have staff that, uh, for instance, last night had, not, not to mention us, had late-night meetings. Um, I can do the 8:30, uh, but I, I kind of wanted to make sure. I know Ed comes from San Jose, he gets up here late. You're okay?
No problem.
You got your four-hour sleep? Okay, so, um, so Wednesdays, um...
So what are we looking at for January? Is this the, we're looking at the third Wednesday, is that the one?
The 20th?
Works for me.
I'll move my dentist appointment.
We actually have the NCPA Strategic Issues Council.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, I might, I might be in China. What, how does the 13th sound?
So the 13th doesn't work for me.
Okay.
27.
Is that waiting too long if we go to 27?
Should we not do a Wednesday?
Just with the holidays, I think, uh, do it sooner.
Well, yeah, 27th works.
Is that too long for some of this stuff, like the letter and...
The letter would be...
My fault, my fault.
So the 19th works. We could do it Tuesday. It's everyone's stuck on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Um, no, but I don't know whether I'm going to be traveling. What about the week before?
The 12th?
The week of the 12th, the 13th?
12 works.
12 works. How's the 12th for folks?
Do you want to say it? You talking about January 12th?
Yeah.
Uh, I can't.
And the...
I couldn't till 9:30.
So what was wrong with the 27th?
27th works for me.
It would work for me too. We can do that.
I can do that.
Okay, great.
8:30?
Yes.
We may be doing Policy and Services in that before.
We're tough.
We're tough.
We just put that in a smaller agenda, so...
It's good, it motivates us to keep it short.
Okay, great, so, uh, we're tentatively on for the 27th at 8:30.
And just, just for planning purposes, is the plan for these meetings to go from 8:30 to 10:00? Or is it, um, and just for making schedules for the day and stuff?
I think that's fine, but I'd basically not do anything till 10:30.
Got it, all right, so I'll put it in my calendar all to 10:30.
How does Pat put? It's an aspirational goal.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you all.
Thank you.
You have a minute?
Yeah.